Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming to the Planning Commission meeting. Today is February 10th, 2014. I'll call the meeting to order. Please rise and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioner Panwalder?
Here.
Commissioner Hanley?
Here.
Commissioner Schwab?
Here.
Commissioner Salaswido?
Here.
Commissioner Gerard?
Here.
And Commissioner Hall?
Here.
Okay, and at this time, I would ask for any nominations for the position of Chair.
You want them from somewhere.
I would like to nominate Sharon Hanley as Chair.
I'll second that question.
Okay, so I have a nomination in a second for Commissioner Hanley as Chair. Are there any other further nominations? Hearing none, is there a motion to close the nominations and cast a unanimous ballot for Commissioner Hanley as Chair?
So who?
And a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Sorry.
All opposed.
That's after I've written here.
We just spoke about that.
Motion carries, and I will now turn the meeting over to Chair Hanley.
Oh, great.
I'm sure.
All right.
Now you can take this under C.
Yes.
Do I have to sit down? I have to?
Congratulations.
Actually, there really isn't a rule, but it's...
I feel like this was, you know, by default, nobody else would do it. Okay. So I guess we are moving on to approval of the agenda.
Um, no, you would go to the Vice Chair. It's basically the same process. Ask for nominations.
Are there any nominations for the Vice Chair?
Well, I will nominate Rachel Schron for Vice Chair.
I'll second that.
Second. So then, I can't say it as eloquently as before, but are we... Is there a motion to approve that as a unanimous decision?
Yeah.
Yes. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion. Second.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, and then we move on to review and adoption of the Planning Commission rules procedure, which is included in your packet.
The... If you want me to cover this?
Yes, please.
A lot of... First of all, let me go back to... I don't know that the rules of procedure have been dealt with since 1986. And so I pulled these out, and what I thought I would do is at least go through and make some updates based on the way you've been operating, so that the rules reflect the way that you've been operating. Then there's a couple of other specific things that I'll mention in here. But then, I think the idea would be that as part of your organizational meeting every year, we'll have the rules in front of you. That way, if somebody wants to make a change to the rules or the way that you operate, that would be the opportunity for them to do that. One of the items in here is setting your meeting dates. And I know that past practice has been that we just put together a schedule, and then you approve that schedule. But I think if you describe when your meeting dates are, it's pretty typical in organizations that you describe when your meetings are. See, the rules of procedure at your organizational meeting, if you ever want to change that, then you could do that as part of changing the rules of procedure. So that's one item that's in here. The other one has to do with hearings. There's a page in here, and I didn't see a date on it. It looked to me to be more of a sort of a handout that you would give to people if they were coming to the Planning Commission meeting. But some of these rules were... Some of these things were in the rules of procedure, and some of them weren't. So the things that... And this was really just my judgment, which certainly could be very different in years if you want to make some changes to it. But I took out of that handout what I thought you might want to include in your rules of procedure. And then, we can still take that and develop this handout and have that as something that would be available to people if they are attending the Planning Commission for a public hearing. This kind of sort of gives them... This is the process for the public hearing. Well, you should adopt something within your rules to state that that's the process. And other than that, fix the agenda, the order of business, to match the way that you've been operating. And then that's it.
Want to change title?
We can make whatever you want.
What rules of procedure, the way you've said?
Yes, that's what...
I think that's how it changed.
Changed, Jim, because...
All of you have crossed out?
No, 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 there's an S on it.
Yeah, it's crossed out.
Oh, procedures crossed out.
I don't see it, though. Okay. Sorry. Next.
So yes, we can make that change.
Well, that was fast.
That was easy.
Next on 5.4. I think it's class. For each other, peach?
Uh, peace.
Yes.
Yeah. Probably I'll say peace, don't you think?
That'd be gooder.
Apple.
Any other thoughts?
I will move for adoption of the rules of procedure.
Yes, it was solid, and if you look at the nominee, it has a S there.
Okay.
So you would...
Rachel, you second the second.
I second that.
Thank you.
So we'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Yes.
Okay, and then moving on to the approval of the agenda, which is included on the front page.
I will move for approval of the agenda as presented.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Okay, and then approval of the previous minutes from last... Well, I guess it's from October. And I didn't see any corrections. Is there a motion to accept that?
I will move for approval of the minutes, October 14th, as presented.
I'll second that.
Okay, all those in favor?
Yes.
Yes. And for the December 16th special meeting, we need to do this as well.
I will move for approval of the December 16th special meeting minutes as presented.
I'll support that.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Are there any public comments? Or do we have to...
No.
Okay. Seeing none, we can move forward with old business. And we have none of that, so we'll move on to new business.
I have not that old business.
The strategic planning, goals and ideas. I think that's the sheet we're looking at now.
Yeah, this is this one?
Okay.
Rules of responsibilities? Yeah, and then the next one, the next thing, priorities? This is... We had some discussion on this. Actually, I met with you all in small groups to talk a little bit about this. And my hope was that maybe we could kind of walk through this item by item and just have a discussion about should it be an A, or B, or C, or none of the above? And it... Just in a nutshell, for the folks who are watching, we... On our strategic plan, we are working with the council and the various boards and commissions to talk about what is the role of each of the boards and commissions. And what we do from that is then we'll have an idea of what the teams are to be able to have an impact, a positive impact in that area of the strategic plan. And so we've walked through it with the council. We've done it with city staff and departments. And we're starting that process throughout this year with the various boards and commissions. And that's what we're doing with the Planning Commission too. So I can facilitate getting us through this. And we'll just start with the very first thing, encourage constructive participation. Do you think the Planning Commission is a major role, or just an active role, or a minor role? Or none at all? A, B, or C? Just draw... I think you can all just sort of throw out what you think. And, you know, just A, B, or C, and kind of see what the consensus is.
I was thinking not an A.
I was thinking more of a B.
And I think a C, so...
Yeah. I thought C.
Yeah.
So there's a little bit of B, a little bit of C.
B minus.
If you don't mind, I'm going to put it as a P. Now, I can explain some of these a little bit later. That one, you do a lot of public hearings, you have a lot of interaction with the public. That's why I was saying it might be a little higher. Engage with individuals and organizations within the community? Maybe not at all?
As opportunity arises.
As a planning commission, are you gonna... Are you gonna attend public events as a group, as a planning commission?
That'd be more on one thing, wouldn't it?
Yeah.
I would say C, maybe as a support.
Okay.
C or nothing?
Or nothing.
Let's say nothing for now. And by the way, I'm going to put all of these down and send them to you. And then, if you're looking at it after I fill it all out, and you say, "I don't know, wait a minute, you know, maybe we need a little bit more discussion on this," we can do that. And this is... It's a fluid. This is a very fluid document. A strategic plan is very fluid, so don't worry about having the wrong answer right now. And power point of boards and commissions, I don't think you have any role in that. That's really more of a council kind of a thing. Collaborate with township schools and local organizations. That would be kind of like...
That was...
...the township planning commissions and stuff. Maybe that's an A or a B?
Definitely a B.
That's a B.
Okay, a B. Integrate with local government, organizations in the West Michigan region. So that's more of a regional thing. Maybe a C?
C.
Promote accomplishments, communicate proactively.
A C. I mean, it's not a nothing.
Not a nothing?
I got B on that one.
It could be a B, B minus?
I feel like we're taking a test for grades.
I know.
Number seven, B.
Well, you know, going back to that one, if it were a B, how would...
Yeah.
I guess I can't envision how we would be active and engaged there.
You... That's true. Yes. Yeah. You might play a minor role. Because you're not going to put out a newsletter or something like that. You might contribute to the city newsletter. You might say, "In the middle of the meeting, hey, you know what? We updated the site ordinance. Can you make sure that we get that next to city newsletter?"
I look at it as today, it's nothing we've really done, but looking at some of these, is these things that, that is the board moving forward? Do we want to take more active role in one or two of these in future, but not today?
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah, and that's one of the reasons why I say this is a fluid thing. Because as you become a little bit more familiar with this, there may come a point in time where you say, "You know what? We really should be a little bit more active in this area." So I put it as a C for now. Annual review and update of the strategic plan? That's really a council... That's really a council function. Maintain city charter, code of ordinances and policies reflecting current objectives. I think you play a major role in that, because of the zoning ordinance. Financial, human, capital resources to reflect strategic plan. You... One of the things that was missing is... Because I put Xs in the ones that I thought you might play some role in. I didn't put it in this. But you do play a role in capital planning. And we haven't done that over the last couple of years. At some point, we'll integrate into this, so maybe that's a C. Preserve city and community facilities. Not really. Streets and utilities. Maybe you don't deal with those. Encourage investment in protecting and developing diverse housing options.
Pretty important, okay?
Pretty important. Ensure all neighborhoods are safe. Maybe not. Maintain walkable neighborhoods with connections to towers or recreation school. Might have a little...
I think that's a B.
Yeah.
Public spaces where people can relax and gather.
Well, that should be part of the planning process.
It's not planning, yeah, it's...
So C or B?
At least a C, so...
Protect and extend urban forest.
Whatever we put for the previous one should match.
Yeah. That's all part of the C, the kind of thing. Promote environmental awareness and encourage efficient refuse removal and recycling. Probably nothing there. That's more aggression. All right, we're almost there. Preserve and honor the historic downtown.
I'm gonna say a B with... For planning, things we do for them.
Promote walkability and accessibility throughout the business districts. Kind of like the other walkable one. That was a C before. Incorporate the rivers and other natural features into downtown development. Other C?
At least a C, yeah.
At least a C. nurture public and private partnerships for prosperous business environment.
A or B?
I'd say B.
Yeah, I think it's pretty high, because you're reviewing site plans and dealing with all that, so... At least a B. Maintain expensive facilities and infrastructure to meet retention and development needs.
We don't have a lot to do with infrastructure.
No, but that one is going to go back to the capital improvement role that you haven't been playing yet. So if you're okay with it, maybe I'll put a C there.
Well, I also just think about our role of the biodigester as well.
Typically, as you're going through the, you know, site plan review and all those kinds of things, I refer to it capital planning. There should be a regular discussion with you every year about these are the city's long-term plans in terms of the water, sewer system, and the, you know, if we're going to add new streets or things like that. And you should be looking at it and thinking of it in terms of where is development going to occur? Is this going to become, you know, an industrial area? Or is this going to become a little more commercialized over here? And so should we be thinking about whether or not we improve the water system to that area? So you play a little bit of a role in that process. And that discussion doesn't always come to you, and it should. We should have a process in place where it does.
If I may, it used to be every year that we would review a capital improvements program. However, it was rubber stamped year after year after year with minor, minor changes. It really was not a way to handle it. So I think what you're proposing is much better.
We're planning...
And I think it's important.
Yeah. So I'll put a C on that. Everybody's going to that? Develop, maintain city trail network connected with regional trailers?
I'm thinking A or B. It's going to be key to this community, in my opinion.
But do we develop it, or is it another group that develops?
Well, I think somebody has to do the leading. And at this point, the leading is being done by LARA, which is the law area recreational authority. And I think that we have to... We, meaning the city, and I would think of the planning commission as being a key to that. Because it does entail the entire community, the entire area, which shouldn't be just left up to the recreational authority or parks. Parks is more specific, I think, in which ball we use for that, and, you know...
Well, Jim, when you look at the... Where do you think our involvement would actually be with that trail? Would we be making decisions on how it runs through our city and where? What are you thinking? Okay. If that was the case, then I would say probably...
Well, okay, one of the key elements, I think, is being able to take the trail people or the bikes or pedestrians from Forma to Jackson Street. How do you do that? I think it's key for the city to be involved in that. Because I think it's... And LARA has brought it up. We are talking about a bridge of some sort. We don't want that traffic on Main Street, but we definitely want the traffic in the downtown area. And so I think we have to be a key element in the decision-making on where those trails are going to go.
And then, as we talk about that, I think that some of the things we put in C under quality neighborhoods and economic vitality could actually be bumped up a little bit in terms of the walkable neighborhoods, public spaces, that sort of thing.
Well, I think that's all going to come together once we...
Yeah.
Because I'd hate to see a bypass bridge so far away that it doesn't bring the people downtown for two shops that are set in downtown. Got to keep it close enough, but yet the safety factor, yeah.
Right.
Well, and how does the location of a trail fit in with your master plan?
Yeah. The bigger vision of...
I think you're right on on it, and I think it's probably an A.
I would hope so.
I think it's a major thing for the planning commission. Should I, going back to your other comment on the... In the neighborhoods, those three in the middle, the walkable, public spaces, and urban forest? I had C on all of them. Do you want them? Do you think, now based on this discussion, will all of them be a B?
Yeah, I think we're more than a minor role. We're really trying to encourage that and...
Engage.
Be engaged, yeah.
I think almost it's more of a collaborative role, you know, with the other groups.
Right.
So...
Like urban forests, you know, our report is going to be A.
Right.
Our report, you know, they're going to be A there. But you're certainly going to be a B on it, because you're going to want to be engaged. We're going to have a little bit of a discussion about... Help me remember the tree plan from today.
Comprehensive tree plan?
Yeah, I want to mention that tonight. Because this will be their only chance at it. But, you know, they're going to be an A on that. But like we said on the trail, you'll probably be an A on the trail, and parks will probably be a B. Parks is going to be interested in how do we develop a trail network that connects all of the parks? And they might even be an A on it, too. It might be something that you guys both work on together in a real active and leadership role.
And like the workup front, that may be a new trail park. So they could all mesh, or should mesh together. And I think it takes everybody kind of working on it and talking to each other as to what the final plan is going to be.
And I think that matches with what we're saying by bumping this up. That it's more than supporting, it's we want to be active.
Okay, so I bumped all of those to B. I was looking at the ones under the economic vitality, and based on your trail discussion, maybe the walkability, the second one ought to be a B? Instead of a C? Maybe the others are okay? Okay, then I'm back down to recreation center board. Develop, maintain city parks, community identified recreational needs.
A C, we can support that.
Makes sense. Partner with local organizations to develop and promote trails, recreation, or culture? Probably nothing. Probably nothing on those two. We did it.
Yeah.
All right, what I'm going to do is I'll fill in the As, Bs, and Cs, and obviously the names of blanks. We'll give another copy out to you at your next meeting. If there's any one of those items you want to discuss a little bit further, let us know. And with that, we're off and running. Thank you very much.
Okay, and moving on to the Planning Commission goals and ideas.
We... Everybody has a copy of this laundry list. Basically, we have kept, and we're going to continue to keep, a what I call a laundry list of things that come up during the year. And we'll continue to add that to this list, and it'll be a running thing. But our hope was to have some discussion with you about what you would see as maybe the top one or two or three things that the planning commission should be focusing on this year. We... You know, you may get busy. We hope you get busy this spring with site plans. But if not, we certainly want to encourage you to be proactive. And we can look at some of the things that were mentioned in the master plan and start implementing that into zoning ordinance changes. Maybe there's other sections of the ordinance that we haven't listed here that you wanted to even look at. So this is the time where my hope would, if I could come out of this and I could get some kind of consensus from you on what your top three priorities are, or one, or two, or five, or if you have too many, then they cease to become priorities. But I'm not trying to limit it to a certain number.
Could you address number three? Is Brian suggesting that they are too strict or not strict enough?
The current lot coverage standards are too strict.
Okay.
Maybe you can help me with that. Do you recall that?
I think it had a lot to do with...
Residential?
I thought it had more to do with commercial. As far as hard surface paving, because it's considered part of the lot coverage, the parking lots.
So two and three maybe could be...
I think three and six are a C. Almost very similar issues, I think.
Could you remind me? I know we went through this before, but what does number six mean?
Six is the one where if we have... Right now, we already have a lot of lots that are non-conforming in terms of our lot coverage standards, because the standards are so strict. And so we could have a discussion about boosting the standards, but we're going to have a lot of non-conforming lots. And so how do we handle those? I mean, obviously, they grandfather in, but at what point in time then do we enforce that? If somebody wants to add an accessory building, and maybe they would still be within the old standard, but they're not going to be the new standard, then how do you handle that? And then, I mean, I don't know, you can read them, but I can, you know, maybe read them for the folks who are watching. One is construction dwellings in certain districts. And two is parking space requirements. Three is lot coverage... Three is lot coverage standards, which we've been talking for, about. Four is a master plan. Although I think you decided, um, you, you have to make a decision every five years and I think you decided last year that we're gonna update for maybe five years. So that probably just goes down on the list. Five is grievous use zoning district. That, that's one that we may very well have something, a potential development coming up. And it was a suggestion in the master plan that we created mixed-use zoning district. If this development occurs, it happens to be in an area that's master planned for mixed use, but we don't have the requirements set up, so, and it would have to be rezoned. So, I'd be struggling with trying to, I'm not struggling too much, but I think we would probably rezone it as a C, probably a C three maybe. But it isn't quite really in a C three area, so, um, it'd be, we'd end up with probably variances that would go along with it, whereas if we had an actual mixed-use zoning district, it probably wouldn't be the needs of this potential development. So that's that issue.
Would we have something in place before that development would?
If you made this a priority?
It would be.
I, I, I think we could, uh, depending on how quickly we move, but I think we could.
I would certainly like to see something.
Yeah. This is what you had to say for special meetings and we just kind of talked about it.
Yes, yeah.
Talked about it, yeah. I, I did a little looking around too and, and a lot of cities have it, so I don't think it'd be rocket science to put something together for, for our behalf to, to make things happen.
Yeah. I, I think we could probably have Andy pull something together fairly quickly, attend a meeting and, and, uh, have him respond to that and probably within a couple of meetings we could, we'd have something put together.
Sounds good.
Agreed, yeah.
Sounds like that's a priority.
It's a priority. It should be, for sure.
It was a priority. The lot coverage number six, we talked about a little bit, uh, then residential, zoning districts. I, that's one I'm familiar with, but it's less in the subx than the historic district.
What does that actually mean?
Well, I, I don't know because I don't think any of the historic district has residential in it.
Um, east side, west side, both have residential areas of, or, oh, that we're playing back in nineteen ten or whatever. Um, there's a thing called new urbanism and, uh, Disney organization plans that way. There's several in Oregon, whatever. I think our zoning law says we have to set aside something like sixty percent of the lot or the coverage can't exceed sixty percent.
That's the lot coverage, yeah.
Having a twenty-foot yard in the old districts is ridiculous. Uh, if you look at some of the older towns, Savannah, Charleston, or whatever, they're dealing with five foot. Uh, what's wrong with a new house coming in that's, has five foot, if you plan for the driveway and the garage and those sort of things? Uh, the other thing is that what they, what they do is, and I'm gonna refer to David Cadwell's old house on Monroe. If you're familiar with that house, it has a huge garage and it could be an apartment over top of that, helping the people that live there pay the rent on the, or the house payments and the taxes and everything else. I think we're restricting the utility in a lot of cases, the utility of the lot itself and putting restrictions on people that really don't need those, uh, restrictions. And I, I think it would benefit the community in general, uh, if people that own a house like David did and want to put in a garage and, like a mother-in-law apartment or something. We've got any number of places like that that have been kind of boxed in, but, uh, never really planned for. Like my lot was somewhere along the line, somebody said, oh yeah, the mother-in-law's gonna live there, so forty years later, the lot gets split off as a separate entity and now you got a little thirty-foot ridiculous lot. I think if you plan ahead and, and we have the zoning in place to do such things, uh, changes in residential areas like the older districts, makes a lot of sense. And you.
Has the form-based code discussion ever come?
There's not a sound from my ear.
Because what you're talking about is where the trend in planning is going, that you start to get, you try to get away from worrying about the numbers and those kinds of things and think more about how is it gonna make the area look? And if it's gonna make the area look okay, then, you know, you're still gonna have your subx, but you loosen your subx a little bit. And I probably just really killed that description of form-based code. The actual planners are gonna see this and wonder what the heck that was talking about.
Get all the planners who can't be on here watching.
Yeah, they, they are, they are. It's gonna go on YouTube eventually.
Anyway, we've, uh, been faced with a situation where somebody wants to add a, an enclosed porch to the front of the house and it cuts their yard down to fifteen, but, anyway. When they did that, the end result was nice and they still have a big front yard. I'm talking about the, I can't remember whether it's, no, it's not King Street, but the next one passed where you used to live.
Down there.
Yeah.
Yeah, pine, no, it's not a pine.
Anyway, uh.
Down those streets. What's that one over there?
Maybe Marcy?
No, this one's down.
Anyway, um, we've done variances for people and I don't think variances are necessary in all those cases. Change in the zoning ordinance might take care of a lot of those situations.
So maybe this one's a little higher on the list?
Two, one.
C.
All right, how about animals?
I like that the rabbits are versus the chickens. It's versus chickens. Like there's a standoff.
There is. It's a war.
I'd like to keep talking about that. I mean, I know it's becoming more and more popular, that, you know, promoting the urban sustainability farming kind of things. And it's worth talking about. I think it's gonna start coming up more and more.
You see it as a priority though?
It is a, next door neighbor gets a goat.
Yes, true. I'm a towner, Jim. Got a horse in your backyard, Mitch? Have a big herd. Spinsted.
I think it's something we definitely should attend to. Seeing that the goats are coming.
Maybe we've got one in town already that I know of.
So, based on, I'm just gonna take a shot, it's based on your discussion, if I were to renumber these, um, I would make number five, one. Maybe make number seven, a two. Eight would be a three. Three and six might be combined, become four. Accessory buildings is kind of important, so one becomes five. Two becomes six. Master plan goes down, uh, what else does that? All I do. That's good.
It's pretty good, yeah.
All right.
Sounds good.
Well, we will get going on mixed use right away. We'll talk to Andy and see if we have something on the next agenda. We did some stuff to you beforehand, we'll try to do that too, but, uh.
Okay, moving on to staff report.
Um, you just, you have the, uh, new permits. Really, there's one on, just the funds permit. Uh, one of the things that I did want to mention is that, uh, we, our board met today, uh, at their meeting in March, um, their meeting in March will actually be noon before your planning commission meeting. But they, at, at that meeting, they'll be recommending a comprehensive tree plan and sending that to the council. And they have to have that in the council by April. They made a bunch of changes to it today, kind of like you did with your prioritization here, they do the same thing with the tree plan. And, um, one of the things that I talked with them about is getting that draft to the planning commission and to, I think, to parks and just asking whether or not you have any comments on it, if you've got any comments, um, just give them back to Sue or myself and we'll make sure the airport gets those comments. So, that's gonna be coming with an email to you, to you, the comprehensive tree plan. If you want to take a look at it, just choose any comments or suggestions that you have, we'll make sure your board gets that. And, see, because that'll be in our staff reports.
Any commissioner remarks?
Oh, yeah, I have one. Do I have to get a permit to, to put a new garage door in that my wife ran through? Does that require a permit? She's backing out? Yeah, she backed out and forgot to open it.
Yeah, this is a six-page form.
Is there, yeah. And triple K. The other thing is, is this is kind of nice. Never seen it, I can't remember saying I seen it before.
Calendar?
Well, the, uh, calendar.
A calendar in general or this?
Oh, the calendar. And don't forget Friday for your sweetest.
Nothing's worked out? John? Shining to adjourn? No, I'm good. I accept that. John seconded that? So we are adjourned now at, uh, seven thirty-seven?
Did you, did you have to vote on that adjournment?
Oh, we do, yeah.
Forty-two.
Oh, forty-two, sorry. Okay. So, all those in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Seven forty-two. I know, it didn't look right.